Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona. It will be held August 6, 2019 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. Deputy, or excuse me. Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige is absent. Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
Mayor Alinsky?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the living public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Any council members have anything to report?
I have a couple of items.
Sure.
So, I attended, actually, the City of Cottonwood hosted the Arizona, the State Department of Transportation Governing Board meeting a couple of Fridays ago, and we had a reception the Thursday evening prior to that. And I did want to say very nicely done to Robert Winnicky, Sandra Salis, and Renee Martin for organizing that and really doing a nice job of hosting the board. It was a great opportunity to talk one-on-one with the department, the governing board, about the regional transportation priorities and some of our concerns and issues as far as state funding for our roadways here. Also, I wanted to give a shout-out to Officers Skaram and Mayor Alinsky for volunteering in the Dunk Tank at Operation Back to School, which was a great, fun community event for kids to get school supplies, backpacks, et cetera. And then, just an announcement tomorrow, NACOG is having a technical subcommittee meeting. It's on the applicability of drones, or drone applicability in statewide policy. But it will be a lunch meeting tomorrow from 12:30 to 1:30 at the Riverfront Water Reclamation Facility with a tour to follow. And if anybody would like more information, I guess you could email me and I can send the additional information. I'm not sure where else it's posted, but that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Just quickly, I'll let you know what we've been up to, in no particular order. There was another back-to-school event that I was able to participate in besides the Dunk Tank, which was fun. I'm glad you weren't holding the softball.
No. I'm gooding.
Yeah. No, every kid, every kid got a shot, and it was a blast. Just a little secret, there's somebody on the backside making sure, even if they miss, the person still gets dunked. There was a welcome-back event, too, for the teachers for Cottonwood Oak Creek School District that I attended, which was great. Superintendent King did a great job, really a pep rally for all the returning teachers. And it's an exciting, exciting time for Cottonwood Oak Creek, so it was great to be there. And we did a tour of Yavapai College. Mr. Corbin was there. Was Mr. Faust there as well? No? Okay. Anyway, we toured their CTEC program on the west side. Dr. Ryan has committed some funding over here to build a CTEC program here in Cottonwood, so we wanted to see their facilities over there, which are very impressive, and we're hoping to get something similar on this side of the mountain, so stay tuned. What else? We, I was able to attend a ribbon-cutting for Manzanita Outreach. Manzanita Outreach is a 501(c)(3) here in the community that does great work getting food to those who need it, and they applied for some grants. They got every grant that they applied for and were able to purchase a refrigerated truck to haul food around, so it's really a great thing, a feather in their cap, and they're doing fantastic work in our community, so it was a real pleasure to represent you all by being there for that ribbon-cutting. Following that was the Erase the Stigma event by Steps to Recovery Homes, hosted at the Recreation Center. Again, great event, good turnout, and hats off to Damian Browning for all that he does. This Saturday, Councilmember Narin has spearheaded the Community Awareness Group, and she has invited me, or voluntold me, to be there this Saturday at 10:30 AM at the library. So, again, really do appreciate Councilmember Narin's work on that. If anyone wants to come and talk about anything of concern, please show up, 10:30 AM at the library. Next week, Monday, I'll be giving a talk to Mountain View Preparatory on civics, which is pretty exciting. I was hoping the Vice Mayor could do that, but she's unable to, so I'll do my best to fill in. And then Thursday, Friday, I'll be attending the Rural Policy Forum in Eager this year with Mr. Corbin. I don't know if anyone else from the city's going?
No.
No? Christian, are you going?
Unfortunately, I'm not.
Tracy will be there from the chamber. Great, so we'll have representation from the Verde up there, so that's it. Mr. Manager, what do you have?
Well, you mentioned all the events I was going to talk about. One other fun event that I attended was Gels Chocolate had a tasting. They partnered with some of their homemade chocolates, and they brought in some wines, some of our local wines. So, it was an after-hours event, just in case anybody was watching. Christian was there, he was a witness. But, great business there, great chocolate. If you get a chance, stop there on Main Street. Also, wanted to let people know that coming up in August 15, from 4 to 7, we're going to have We Are Cottonwood Fest out here in front of the clubhouse. We're going to have some food trucks, games for all ages. Cottonwood Fire Medical Department, along with the Police Department, will be present with some of their vehicles. Hopefully, we'll have a canine there, I think, to do some demos. We're also going to be raffling off some prizes, and the best part of the whole event is you can get a selfie with the mayor and possibly some others. I don't know that I've seen all the RSVPs, but we might have some council members there to take pictures with for a selfie with City Hall Day is really what it is. Also, HPC will be there selling bricks, so we can add some bricks to our clubhouse, and then some of our other commissioners will be there also to talk with folks and help us celebrate. Again, that is Thursday, August 15, from 4 to 7 at the clubhouse. I did want to let council know, just in case you didn't get the email, Walmart's re-grand opening. Their opening has been canceled at this point. Walmart is not holding any grand openings in the near future, given what has happened. And I'm going to circle back to that in just a second, if I could. A couple other things. I wanted to let council know that I met with Sparklight, used to be Cable One, to talk about broadband access, and it was pretty positive. It seems to believe that we have significant broadband access already in our community, and so I've asked them to come back in the fall to talk to council and the community about what is out there. But if there is a business or organization that needs better or more or new access, they should reach out to Richard Faust, and we can make a connection for him. But it was actually better news than I had originally believed, so I've asked him to come back later to speak with us. So, the other thing is, Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted to have just a quick moment of silence. It's a very sad day in our national community, given the number of lives lost in Ohio and Texas.
No, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is presentations. We're pleased to have Friends of the Verde River with us this evening. Nancy Steele, Executive Director. They've requested to present information on the Smithsonian Waterways Museum exhibit on Main Street coming to the Camp Verde Library for six weeks, beginning on August 24. Good evening.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come here and make this presentation. I do have a presentation. I'm not sure how to get it up on the screen. It's on, it just went to blank. It's this one right here? And I also brought a poster, in case anyone would like it. All right, well, we're getting that done. I just want to ask, who doesn't love a nice cold drink of water, or a cool dip in the river on a hot summer's day? Water is life, and water is what brings us a lot of joy, and water is, in many ways, why we're here in the Verde Valley. Because of not only the availability of water as a drinking water source, as a source of water for agriculture, but also because it's what we need to drink to keep ourselves living and alive. So, all right, filter maintenance is necessary. It'll go away, great. So, with that, I want to, let's see if I can figure it. No, I just turned it off.
The other way.
The other way. All right, let's try that. Yes, all right. So, with that, I want to invite you all, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what the Smithsonian Waterways exhibit is. Home is where the water is, indeed. And so, these agencies and entities, Friends of the Verde River, Saver Ancient Red Rocks, Yavapai College, the Yavapai Apache Nation, Camp Verde Community Library, and Cottonwood Community Library have come together. We've been working together for about the last two years to bring this national traveling exhibit here to Camp Verde. And right now, it's in Page, Arizona, but this exhibit is also in Oxford, Maryland, Norman, Oklahoma, Syracuse, New York, and Landy, New Jersey. So, again, this is a program of the Smithsonian to bring museums to Main Street, to bring museums to our cities throughout the nation, to enrich, enliven, and educate all of us about our, the places where we live, and the things that are important to us. So, Waterways, like any good museum exhibit, it's got a number of different features. It's got an exhibit, which is somewhat static. The exhibit itself will stay in Camp Verde at the Camp Verde Library, but there are programs that will be running throughout the Verde Valley. And we've got to do something with text, so there's an online element, WaterSim Arizona. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit more later, but it's, that does travel, and that will be here in Cottonwood. So, in Arizona, this has been going on for two, I guess, three years in total. It's been going throughout Arizona, as I said. It's in Page right now and is coming to Camp Verde August 11. So, you can see the professional displays that we have. This isn't, you know, this is a very professionally-built exhibit. It's general, though, right? It's talking about water and water in our world, water in our state, and we've added to it, we've added to it, specific cards, which will be on each of the panels, that will tell you something about water in the Verde Valley. And those will be things, those will be cards that you can take away, that children can take away, teachers can take away, and that we can use and have as a reminder of this exhibit. As I, well, all right, I said too early. I said the 11th. It's coming here August 24, and will be here through August 5, or through October 5. And I'll just give a shout-out, although I'm sure I'll come and talk to you about this later, but the State of the Verde Watershed Conference will be, what, three weeks later down in Camp Verde, August 28, 29, and 30. And that actually is the culminating event of the Waterways exhibit. So, the programs. I have passed out a programs card to you. I've given some to people in the audience, but I've got some more as I leave tonight. If you want one, please just ask. But the programs and events start as early as August 20 with a juried art exhibition at Yavapai College, and we'll be having an opening reception for that on the 23rd. The opening reception down in Camp Verde will be on the 24th, and so on. A lot of exciting things, and I said, as I said, many of those are in the Cottonwood Library also. And here's the water sim. You've got to have an educational, hands-on element to our programs to engage people. This is a fun way to explore how changing conditions might change how our water is not just here specifically, it's a more general simulation, but depending on the water source availability, changes in water use efficiency, how can we change our water supply and availability? So, I haven't used it yet. I haven't had a chance to play with it, so I'm really looking forward to playing with it. But there will be setups in the libraries in each of those three areas, Yavapai College, Cottonwood, Sedona, and it'll also be in Camp Verde. So, this is a personal invitation I want to extend to all of you to come to the opening exhibit on the 24th from 1 to 4 PM. There's going to be a few fun things happening that day. There will be a walk in their native plant garden. There will also be a sort of a, we're going to make kind of a big deal out of the newly-designated Camp Verde Important Bird Area, so we'll have some people from Northern Arizona Audubon who will be coming to talk about that, and we'll do that outside. So, if you, the cards that I've passed out with events, that's kind of static, and we might be adding some events. So, I urge you to go to the online, verdiriver.org/waterways, and look at events, look at what's happening, and see how you can interact with water in your community. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Steele?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in this evening. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, next is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16, 2019.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember, it's been so long. Alt House made the motion, and Narin seconded it? No? Vice Mayor seconded it. Alt in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Thanks. I'll clean, I'll clean up my act. All right, unfinished business. We have just two items tonight under unfinished business, and first up is ordinance number 664, amending the city parking code to expand the types and colors of markings that can be used.
Mayor?
I am sorry.
Call to the public?
How did I skip that? We have so many out there tonight, too. Sorry, folks. Thank you. Call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Are there any folks here tonight that would like to address the council during Call to the Public? Okay. All right. We move on, then, to ordinance number 664, amending the city parking code to expand the types and colors of markings that can be used to designate and reverse, excuse me, reserve, access aisles adjacent to parking spaces for use by and for handicapped individuals. This is the second and final reading. I don't believe our magistrate is with us tonight, but I'm sure Mr. Corbin would be happy to.
Answer any questions you might have. Good, glad there are none.
Pretty cut and dry, pretty simple.
We covered it pretty thoroughly the last time with her presentation.
Yep.
So, if there's no further discussion, I move to approve ordinance number 664. Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Don't we have to ask if the public wants to?
Do we have to have the public hearing part?
Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to address this on ordinance 664? So, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, please read ordinance number 664 by title only.
Ordinance number 664, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Chapter 10.20.040, restricted parking areas reserved for the physically disabled, subsections B, C, and D of Title 10 vehicles and traffic of the municipal code of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next on unfinished business is ordinance number 665, rezoning a parcel of land located at 718 North Main Street that currently lies within four separate zoning districts into a single zoning designation of commercial residential. Again, second and final reading. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you said, this is second and final hearing, and there's no change since the last time. Just recap the project. This is located right here in Old Town, 718 North Main Street, and there were four different zonings on the property, and we are just changing to CR, commercial residential. And again, this is second hearing, and there are no calls or changes since the last time.
All right, very good. This has all been done in concert with the owner, who's on board, so. Anybody here tonight to speak on this issue? No? Okay. Take a motion? Yes, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 665.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Hulse seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, please read ordinance number 665 by title only.
Ordinance number 665, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 10.41 acres, APN 40642014, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof, from the present four zoning designations of CR, commercial residential, R1, single-family residential, R2, single-family, multi-family, multiple-family residential, and R3, multiple-family residential, to a single zoning designation of CR, commercial residential. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So, we have eight items tonight under the consent agenda. I'll read them out, and if there's anybody in the audience that would like to have an item pooled, please raise your hand. And council, if there's any item you'd like to have pooled, please let me know. So, first item is, item one, special event liquor license application submitted by Christian Oliva Del Rio, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for a chamber mixer scheduled for August 15, 2019, at the William Thomas Mattress Gallery located at 1100 State Route 260, Suite D2. Item two, special event liquor license application submitted by Rudy Rodriguez, applicant for the City of Cottonwood for the Thunder Valley Rally Event, scheduled for September 20th and 21st, 2019, at Riverfront Park. Item three, special event liquor license application submitted by Karen Lee, applicant for the Friends of the Verde River for an event scheduled for September 14, 2019, at 735 North Main Street, Suite A, which is Muse Gallery. Item four, extension of premises liquor license permit application submitted by Ciro Gutierrez, licensee for Mineros Mexican Food located at 625 East State Route 89A. Item five, request for reduction of water line easement width in a portion of Phase One, Unit 3 of the Mesquite Hills subdivision between lots 143 and 144. Resolution number 3020, approving an agreement with Yavapai County Free Library District for Library Support Services and Membership in the Yavapai Library Network. Item seven, acceptance of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for preparation of a new airport master plan. Item eight, authorization to submit an application to the Arizona State Historic Preservation Office for a historic preservation matching grant. Any items a member of the public would like to have pooled? Council? Okay. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consent agenda is approved, and then we roll into new business. Following items are for council discussion, consideration of possible legal action. First up is.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to pool item number one from the agenda as one of the applicants withdrew their application, therefore, the three remaining applicants all meet the qualifications and are eligible to be appointed at the next regular council meeting.
Okay. Is that good with council?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So, then we go into item number two, which is ordinance number 666, amending the city's zoning ordinance by amending Section 305 Code Review B, application for code review, first reading. I wouldn't think they'd allow an ordinance with that number.
Right.
Well, good luck.
Okay, and this one, ordinance 666, just to update the code review section of the zoning ordinance, we've been, we had some outdated codes listed there for the applicants to comply with, so we are changing just the verbiage on that, that we don't have to update and just use generic current codes. So, again, let's just clean up the code.
Any questions from council? No? Okay. Housekeeping. This is first reading, so again, of course, we'll bring it back. Any members of the public here tonight that'd like to speak on this item? Okay. That was easy. Okay, then, if we could have the clerk read ordinance number 666 by title only, please.
Ordinance number 666, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city zoning ordinance by amending Section 305 Code Review B, application for code review five. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is a public hearing and consideration of a request for an extension of the deadline to complete the conditions required by ordinance number 627 for the rezoning of two parcels of land located at 770 North Verde Heights Drive and 75 West Pima Street to develop a vineyard, winery, tasting room, and restaurant, Merkin Vineyards Pizzeria.
This project was approved June 19, 2017, and with this one stipulation that all the certificate of zoning compliance needed to be done within two years, and there are some changes. The project has new team, and they are working with the staff, and we would like to extend that, since we are working with them, and also they apply for three-years' extension request. Again, the project is ongoing. They are working with staff to make improvements, and soon they will be coming for design review to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, this is just for three more years of extension to the project. One thing is, there was seven stipulations approved originally, and six of them will continue with the time extension. Do I read those now or later? So, with the extension, these six stipulations would be going to the new extension timeframe. One is that the project is developed in accordance with the master development plan submitted on June 6, 2017, and second, that the project conforms to code review board comments dated February 28, 2017, and MDP staff review comments dated May 31, 2017. Three, any other required supporting documentation is submitted to staff and approved, like drainage reports and surveys. Four, the project comes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for design review to include design of the building, site plans, landscape plan, signage, screening, and any other design-related aspects of the project typically found in a design review submittal. Five, any future residents will require code review and design review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Six, any future buildings will require code review and may require design review approval. So, these six stipulations will move forward to the new extension.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Questions?
And, Mr. Mayor, you are, we are, have to open the floor to the public.
Okay. Okay. So.
I'm sorry, I'm assuming staff is fully recommending this and approving.
Definitely, because we are already working on the project. And meantime, the representative of the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Okay.
I think it's a great project. I'm really looking forward to it being up there, and.
I'm really looking forward to it being up there and being done. I hope it doesn't take the full three years, because I think we're all really looking forward to it being done and making that hill up there look beautiful.
Absolutely.
Just quickly, it's a big project.
I know.
It will come in phases.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and open the floor then to the public. Are there any folks here tonight that'd like to address the council on this item? Okay. I know there is a representative from the applicant here this evening. If you care to address council, you're more than welcome to. There's no pressure.
She's doing a good job.
Okay. All right, then, Council, how would you like to proceed?
Make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to extend until June 21, 2022, the deadline for the owners of the property conditionally rezoned by ordinance 627 to comply with the original condition and stipulation set forth in the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Althouse seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, fourth item under new business is a funding agreement with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce to promote, develop, and enhance tourism and economic development for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'm available to answer any questions. Music is in the background there, and of course, the Chamber CEO is also here if you had any questions. Over the last few months, Christian and I have worked closely together to come to this agreement, set the funding, which you guys already did in the budget process, and then what we did was come up with some expectations and some criteria for the Chamber to produce over the next year. We do expect to relook at this contract again next year, you know, to see how it's going, how it's evaluating. They're going to be producing quarterly reports now, and they seem very on board, spoke with some of their board members, and I'm actually very excited about this contract and the clear expectations, I think, to receive the bed tax money. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I'm sure Christian would be happy to do so also.
Yeah, I mean, I've read over that, and it looks like there's some good expectations and accountability in there, but some of us haven't been privy to the older contracts. Can anybody kind of summarize the differences between the older contracts and what we've put in there for that?
Yes, the older contracts had two lines of what I call accountability or expectations, scope of work kind of thing, where it was just general work on our behalf, the city's behalf, to produce tourism, bring tourists in, market the city of Cottonwood. And what we've done, as you've seen in those, scope is we've... Three pages, I think? Three or four pages? It's a long list of expectations that include everything from some of the marketing we'd like them to do, promoting some of our events that we have going on, working with our community members, the OTA, the wine consortium, which they already do, they're, you know, working very hard on the Wine Trail, and they just made a nonprofit status or working on that for them. So they're doing those things, but it just kind of lays it out. They've also have some new partnerships that I know that they've been working on. And one of the biggest things that I've asked is to really toot their horn, so we know what they're doing. In the few months that I've been here, we have seen tourist magazines talk about Cottonwood, highlight some of our restaurants, highlight Old Town, and we're never quite sure where that happens. And so we're working with Christian and his team to really find out where that started. Often, it starts from them hosting a writer, inviting him to town, or someone from the Arizona Tourist Group to reach out and make a contact through their office. So it just kind of makes it clear that we want to understand what they're doing on our behalf, and then that, of course, we provide them that significant funding. Of course, it also clarifies the operating of the building of the... Yeah, visitor center is like tourist spot. That's right. The visitors' center, and they'll measure attendance and those kinds of things there. And they're also providing some flyers for Old Town for visitors that happen to be, already be here. So just, we're kind of, they've stepped up. I'm pretty impressed so far, and we're just, the contract just kind of solidifies all of that in writing.
Great, thank you. Good job to everybody that worked on that.
Yeah, Jeff, Richard, Rudy, and of course, Christian's whole team working with us, so...
So I just had a question, because I thought previously the amount was calculated, you know, as a percentage. How did we come up with the compensation figure?
So they were originally, back in the day, 100% of our hotel bed tax. Part of that went to the CEDC, the Economic Development, Cottonwood Economic Development Committee, and then they paid 15% of that. I think that's the correct number, 15% of that amount to them, so they were getting about 85%. We did not fund in the budget this year, the CEDC, so the amount that we put down there was approximately the amount that they expected to get at the 85%. So that, the number you see in there is a flat amount versus a fluctuating amount, and we really wanted to just set a base amount that they could budget and plan for, and see if they could meet our expectations and us theirs. My guess is we might go back to a percent-based next year. I know that there are members of my staff who really want to see that, but we just kind of felt like we wanted to have a base point of where we were at. So it was just this year's number, expected number at 85% of our bed tax.
And I'm just asking, just out of curiosity, I'm a big supporter of the Chamber. I, you know, have seen firsthand the really good events and marketing and just what the Chamber does, and I'm a big supporter, but I just also want to make sure that we've thought through, and I'm guessing we have, any gift of funds analysis with using a fixed amount instead of something that's actually tied to our bed tax amount, and that we're kosher from that perspective.
Well, I'll let the attorney answer that more specifically if he thinks is appropriate, but what we looked at, we looked at, there's a state law that requires a certain amount of funding of your bed tax to go towards marketing and tourism and those kinds of things. Would this amount is above our required amount, and it had to do with when our taxes were passed compared to when the state law was passed. So we've ensured that we're meeting the requirement of the state statute for that, and in my non-legal opinion, we're paying for a service, and they're providing via the contract.
To the other side of your question, if there is a concern, and this was discussed internally, that the revenues would not meet this amount, there, you can have on a contract, and you could even put it in your motion, something called fund-out language, meaning that the obligation to make these payments would be limited by 100% or whatever percentage you decide of the revenues we take in from the bed tax, and have sort of a failsafe for the city's revenues that way.
But we looked at an average over a 12-month, 24-month, or, I mean, multi-year period to come up with this number, right?
Correct. Yes. Okay. And... I feel very comfortable this year, given the state projections I've had over the next few years. It would be safer to go to a percent-based, I think, in the following year, in the fiscal year 21. The economists are talking about a possible downturn in the economy, which of course affects travel and tourism. So at that point in next year, when we do next year's budget, we could look at going back to the percent-based. All the stuff I've seen so far, and again, I'm not an economics kind of guy, I feel very comfortable with this number, and we have a 15% cushion, even if it was to be exactly the same. And with the addition of Airbnb's and those kinds of things, we have the hotel, hopefully that will be going up at the end of the street. On Main Street, we'll be adding some rooms. We would expect that the bed tax to increase.
That's Ron. Infer, there was a spirited discussion. The staff, the staff pushed, Ron pushed back, and pushed harder.
Thank you.
We can revisit that next year, I think.
I've already seen the downturn this week, but I feel pretty confident we're going to make that number this year, and I think your plan to look at a percentage next year is a wise one.
Well, but that would be by agreement of the parties, because the language as is has us locked in until June 2022.
Correct. The attorney in the room put it on three calendars to make sure that we notified... Staff laughing. To make sure Christian was notified of our intent to renegotiate the contract next year, kind of like we did this year also. We gave both the CEDC and the Chamber notice early in the spring, early, to let them know that we had planned on doing this, this contract.
May 1st notice, that means as staff does after the council's retreat later this year in budgeting, we can do the numbers, and notice can go to the Chamber. As long as it goes by May 1, then we're not, we're only obliged through this fiscal year.
That wasn't how I interpreted the clause. So you mean, are you referencing four with, I mean, three?
Section 3, Rule 3.
Okay. So of every year. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions from council for staff? Would Mr. Oliva Del Rio like to come up, make a presentation? Answer any questions? I also want to extend my appreciation to you and your team in working with the city through this whole process.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's exactly what I wanted to come up here and say, is that, you know, this marks my 12th year with the Chamber, and we've had a wonderful working relationship, and I'm very excited to be working with Ron. You know, we went through the process, and I'm very excited about this contract that we have. We have some clear definitions of what's expected, and, you know, a lot of the things that were in that list, we are doing. Lana was very good at, you know, telling the story of the Chamber, and that's an area for me to improve in, so I'm excited for the challenge and looking forward to working with you all, and appreciate the involvement.
Well, we appreciate you. This is teamwork, so...
It is. It is. We love this community, and it's our job to make everybody else love it too.
Any specific questions?
Can you touch on the gift shop? What kind of Cottonwood swag are you planning to have?
Sure. So we've always had a little gift shop in our visitor center, postcards, mugs, pins. We're trying to improve on the wine line, so we'll have some Verde Valley Wine Trail swag, you know, bottle openers, those kind of things. We do sell wine glasses as well. We were doing a split order with CEDC when we did wine glasses, which is things that you take to the League of Cities, and so we're selling that, trying to market it a little bit better. Since the move, we have seen a decrease in numbers of people actually walking through the door, but we have contracted with Heather Herman, Frontburner Media, and we have a marketing plan to start promoting and marketing the visitor center itself. That will start drawing more people our way.
Makes, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Makes me think of a question. Either one of you, are we sponsoring a booth or anything at the conference?
Yes.
I mean, oh, we are? Okay.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I can't make that one either, but...
So we'll give a shout out. Hopefully, we're not too far off topic, but yes, we will have some swag there, and our Parks team is going to be in town, and so they're going to help us man the booth. So we're going to have some kids and some park staff over there helping with the booth. Rudy and I will be there, and then, oh, you'll be there.
You guys get to work in the booth. It was fun last year. It was fun. We had a good time.
Sorry I'm missing it. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, council?
I move to approve the proposed contract with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Narin made the motion, and Althouse seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, very good. Last item under new business is discussion, consideration, and possible adoption of new membership rates for the Cottonwood Recreation Center. Evening.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for your time this evening. So I'm going to run through a quick PowerPoint presentation. Hezekiah Allen with the Parks Recreation Department. And through the presentation, the main point we want to make is that this is just not a membership rate change. This has been a complete package, an overhaul of what we do at the rec center. I really want to give a shout out to our team at the Parks Recreation Department for the changes we've put in. It's been a lot of hard work, and then Ron's leadership and direction. So anytime that you look at a business strategy, the first thing we like to do is look at the local area, look at the surroundings, the demographics, the median household income. And so we pulled these numbers, and it's real quick, down and dirty, looking at Cottonwood, Clarkville, Verde Village, Jerome, and Cornville. That's the more immediate surrounding areas, and this is the base population for which we attract people to the rec center. There's also those individuals that come from Sedona. But what's interesting is that when you look at the median age, five and under, 18 and under, and 65 and over, it's predominantly an older population in the local area. And then the other thing is look at median household income, ranges anywhere between $32,000 and $50,000, with Cornville being the higher end at $50,000. And the total area population is 32,267. And this is based off of 16, 17, 18 data. The population's a little more towards 18, 19, depending on the figures we could find.
Has, if I can add, one of the reasons that number is very important is that's what other gyms and recreation facilities, that's the number they use to determine if there is viable opportunity to be a successful business in our community.
So this slide is looking at our current membership and what the breakdown is. The one on the left is membership by level, meaning membership by the category they purchased, day passes, 10 visit guests, 10 visits, one month, three months, six months, and a year. And so you can see that 27% are in the year category, which is great, and then on the other side, 22% is in day passes, a lot of it predominantly being the youth, and then definitely in the summertime. The lowest is the 10 visit guest. On the right, membership revenue by demographic, adults and seniors make up the largest portion of the pie. Those are the senior memberships, and then the single adult memberships. And then from family at 11%, youth at 11%, and adult couple at 7%. And so when you look at the rates, really, as when we get further in the slides, the rates that we're suggesting, we did a lot of research to get this information. We dove deep dive into the data. Rob and our team, Rob and on our team did a fantastic job really pulling this information up so that we can help make educated decisions moving forward. Oh, and then the lower section is resident members, adults, adult couple, youth, family, and seniors, and then non-residents. So that's comparing the in-town versus the out-of-town. Predominantly, a larger part of our membership, 53%, are non-residents. This slide is looking at the cost of the facility. Largely, the costs lie in full-time staff and part-time staff. I think any business you talk to will tell you the same thing. Your largest part of your costs is staffing. What stands out to us is really if you look at utilities, utilities is kind of the greener one. It's up here in the... Let me see if I can... Utilities is right in this area. This is lease purchase, so the equipment that we purchased a couple of years ago, and then cardio equipment, and then health insurance, and then the red is equipment maintenance and repair. Obviously, as the facility gets older, the equipment maintenance and repair tends to go up a little bit, but really, when we built this strategy, we're looking at this pie chart going, where can we have the biggest impact? And utilities, by saving lights and energy and being sustainable, and then part-time staff and full-time staff, how we schedule, when we schedule, what are our hours of operations, and again, we'll get to that when we go over the strategy. Any questions on this slide? The strategy. When the city manager came on board, he challenged the Parks Recreation Department to increase cost recovery. He set a goal for 75%. After we caught our breath, we got to work. So basically, the checkmarks are the things we've already done. Again, big shout out to our department for getting on the stick and getting these things done. Develop a customer service strategy. Mr. Jack Teal's done a fantastic job putting that together. No longer is the front desk called the front desk. It's called guest relations, guest services. We want to set that tone at the beginning. We want, as people come through the facility, we want to say hi. We'd ideally like to call them by their name. We're not just a facility, we're not just a box gym. We're a place for people to come together and make connections. Increase hours of operations. The biggest thing that we've seen over the years is that weekends, we'd have a line of people waiting at the door to get into the facility. So what we've done is we've adjusted the hours of the facility, and we've done it in a manner not to increase the staffing cost. We've actually decreased staffing costs. Invest into fitness trends and procure equipment. What we mean by that is go out and see what the trends are, spin classes, Peloton bikes. I bug Trevor all the time. Let's key into those brands that are already doing a lot of marketing and are going to help us sell the facility. Let's key into those brands that are already doing a lot of marketing and are going to help us sell the facility. As well as some equipment that's going to get different demographics into the facility. Create a one-stop, customer-focused web portal. So we're looking at, on our website, if you go to the Parks Recreation Department, we are buried within the government website, which is great. But for us, who engage the public a lot, having that quick access and then a page to where if somebody wants to go and register, say a mom wants to register their son or daughter for swim lessons, they go and we want two to three clicks max and they have that individual registered classes done. That's going to do a couple of things. One, streamline the process for the local community. Two, on our front desk, reduce some of the workload that our front desk is having to receive at this point.
Has, I want to add also, as you noticed, day passes was a significant portion of our use, or the passes that bought. If they could buy those passes online, then they don't even have to stop at the front desk. They scanning and use our business. So anything we can do to reduce the impact on our front desk will eventually help us with our staffing issues. And as he was talking about the equipment up there, you notice, in my opinion, our adult members are low percentage-based and we'd like to up that. So when he was talking about trends, we're really trying to figure out how to get that market that we believe is still untapped, that we can bring into the rec center. So very specific goals we have in, in some of these objectives.
The next one, reduce utility costs. If you go back to that pie chart, utility costs is a big section of the rec center. I want to say sometimes on average, our electric cost alone is $14,000 a month for the building. It's expensive. It's a big facility. So anything we can do, even small, for example, what we've done is actually isolate the banquet hall wing during certain hours of the facility, mornings and evenings, right? If we're focused on providing that gym atmosphere, that facility, we don't really need that banquet hall to be up and running and we can turn those lights off and power down that energy, save us a little bit. Same thing with the gymnasium. There are certain times during the day, in the early mornings and the late evenings, that there's nobody in the gym, but yet we'd have the lights all the way on. So we've cut that out. In addition to our lighting outside of the facility, we, we've changed most of it to LED. We're in the process of finishing a lot of the interior, switch over to LEDs. We're trying not to go out and make this mass purchase. We've done a little bit of that. And so now what we're doing is as lights go out, we're replacing them with LEDs. Add value to memberships. One of the areas that we can be extremely competitive is that we're not just a box gym. If you're looking for that, there are great local box gyms. But we provide a facility that is more than that. We provide childcare to aquatic facilities, great staffing. And so by the membership package expanding, now that one raise is going to cover childcare, no additional cost. Aerobics classes at no additional cost and the outdoor pool at no additional cost. One membership gets everything. And then create a simplified competitive pricing structure, that's why we're here today. Implement a brand strategy. So one of the things we want to do is create that connections. Be that neighborhood, community program or the community facility. So monthly, bi-monthly, have programs that pull people to the facility that aren't members. Members and non-members is what we're looking to do.
Has, if I, if I can add on the connections, I wanted to invite Dr. King to come talk about connections because his key to successful kids is creating connections with them. In HR, successful employees are through connections. And now we're taking that same philosophy and trying to make that happen at the gym. So very, very trendy, you would say, but I, I think it speaks volumes that people want to go where they're welcomed and where they feel welcomed and, and their goal of creating those connections at the front desk is just, it's commendable.
Research, implement and evaluate marketing plan. Basically, what that means is in the past, we've been really good about throwing money out there and procuring marketing. But on the backend, where the real magic happens is did it work? And being able to dive into the research, okay, we did a promotion here. Did we see an increase in revenues? Is there a correlation? Did those certain media outlets work? And so that, that's one of the things we want to do towards the future. Also looking at free days, doing some kind of discount program for members that have never been a member of the Recreation Center. That way we can pull in new people to the facility.
Has, can I ask a question on the utility costs? I had heard that we heat our pool. Do we, really?
So.
Yes.
Here in Arizona, we're heating. Seems odd to me.
But if council remembers, a couple of years ago, we actually purchased a solar hot water heating system for the facility for the domestic and the pool water. And so basically, what that does is it pumps water to the roof and during certain parts of the day, heats that water up through an exchanger, actually heats the pool water and the domestic side water.
So we're using solar power to warm the water. What we need to work on, and you'll see, I think, in a few slides, is the pumping. We have some very outdated pumping equipment that runs a lot. I tell Has, every time I walk by that outdoor pool, I hear money flying out the window because the pumps are running continuously. So it's on our agenda possibly for next year. We put money aside this year to work on some equipment for the branding and the programming. And then hopefully next year, we can set some money aside to update our pumping mechanisms for both our pools, which we think will help bring that cost down.
Do we, do we turn that off in the, in the summer, the?
So the outdoor pool goes down the one pump. And Jack's here and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We go down the one pump because we have to keep circulation per the county standards. What Ron's referring to, the city manager, is variable speed pumps. Based on demand, they ramp up and they ramp down. For example, we have one pump in the indoor pool for the place structure that is massive compared to the load demand that is required of it. And so we've got it so dialed back that it's almost close to cavitating. What's a fancy word for saying that the pump impeller is just doing more work than what's needed, which is driving the electricity cost up.
Yeah, motors eat up electricity. So the heating itself doesn't cost us a significant amount of money. And we're working on fixing the pumping thing. And for those of us, and I'm not a very good swimmer, but those of us that swim in our swim teams, our local swim teams and our seniors do appreciate the warmer water. In the early spring, late fall, it actually gets cold. You wouldn't think so, but the water does get cold. As soon as the nights start getting cold, that night temperature causes the temperature in the pools to stay lower than most of us would like to swim in.
I just remember when we had a pool, we always wanted it cooler, not hotter. So people put in actual coolers to cool the water instead of, you know, heaving them here in Arizona. So I was, I was just surprised to hear that we heated our pools.
And we do that. We have aerators to help cool the waters in the summertime to keep that temperature down.
Thank you.
There's just a quick graphic on the side that highlights, you know, when you look at marketing, you're really looking at the four Ps, product, place, price and promotion. So when you look at the hours, what we did, the man, the maness behind it was we created non-business hours and business hours. So the Recreation Center was open from 4:30 to nine in the past. 4:30 in the morning till nine o'clock at night. And what we, the expectation we were giving is that we're ready and going to give the best customer service from 4:30 in the morning till nine o'clock at night. And we were finding it just wasn't feasible to be able to provide that level of staffing all the time. And so what we did is we created from 4:30 in the morning to seven in the morning, seven thirty-ish, this kind of mem, not member only, but reduce services at the front desk where we're allowing people in, we're checking cards and they have access to the fitness floor, gymnasium if they need it, the aerobics room, we have some classes in the morning. So we actually eliminated, we went down to just a fitness coordinator who also helps out at the front desk. And there was just one person along with maintenance, two people in the building in the mornings for the facility. So it helped us reduce the staffing cost so that we could expand the hours that the facility operates. We kind of did the same thing on the backend. We were able to extend the hours to 10 o'clock at night by reducing the amount of staff and really streamlining the expectations of what we're going to provide customer service-wise. And then from eight to seven o'clock during the day, that's when all hands on deck. Anything you need at the Recreation Center or the Parks Recreation Department, it's important to, to express that, that statement is that the front desk is, or the guest service is not just the rec center. It's the entire department's phone call center. So if you want to rent a Ramada or buy tickets for TBR, you're going through guest services. And then on the weekends, we expanded from 6:00 AM down to 8:00 PM. So that helped those folks that were in the morning and wait for the facility to open. Any questions on the hours? One of the other things that we put together is an innovations team. We had some newer staff on the department. They had some fresh eyes. And we asked them to come up with some ideas for equipment. Low-cost equipment, that's very trendy, that people are looking for. And they came up with the Fit Zone, low-cost, big impact. And if you go into the Recreation Center, one of the party rooms, and we did all the math and the data to find out, okay, how much money are we making on the party rooms? Is it going to help our bottom line? We don't want to take both party rooms, so we just took the one on the end. We left the one closest to the pool, so party still wanted to happen. They have access to the pool. And then on the right, we created the Fit Zone with cables and some medicine balls and punching bags. And surprisingly, it gets used a lot. Our instructors like using it, especially the personal trainers. So we'd like to do more of that.
And you could still rent the whole thing, I believe, on the weekends. So if there was a large birthday party or something like that, we can make it all work. The biggest part is making it flexible. We had all this space not being used. And so we're trying to utilize all the ground that we have because it's a beautiful facility and we just had places collecting cobwebs. And, and I do notice that we do have staff in those pictures using the equipment. I'm told that they do still periodically use that equipment, so I'm kind of excited about that.
I tried it once. It was not pretty. Back to the one-stop online access. So right now, council authorized us to do Civic Rec. So you're aware Civic Rec is the backend. So when you register, for example, you go to website and you click register. That's going to take you to Civic Rec. You'll scroll down, pick what you want to sign up for, hit pay. And then the whole backend is Civic Rec. The data, producing reports, the money process, that's Civic Rec. The other thing we're working on through Civic Plus, which is a provider for the city's website, is developing an engagement page, a platform page. That's what you land on when you go to Parks Recreation that represents us, represents the city and allows for easy transfer of information. And that's what we're in the process of redoing. We want to do Civic Rec first, make sure that's up and going and functioning on the backend. And then after that, do our engagement page, landing page. These are some of the cities that if you go to, Maple Ridge, Denton, Texas, that we're trying to scale it off of, basically.
The, the second bullet there is important, the kiosk. We're looking at opportunities for non-managed spots where people can check in and check out or buy a pass online, basically access our website and our services right there near the front desk.
Yep. IT is doing a great job for us and helping us research that. Basically, that, that would be you'd walk into the facility and they'd give you an opportunity to get on, click really register and continue with your workflow. This is, we, we call this page sustainability because it's really what it is for the Recreation Center and the city as a whole. And these are some of the things we've already done. I briefly touched on on prior installed HVC control systems. We fine-tuned that, updated the chemical feed system for the indoor pool. We were able to work with AES, who's our provider, and they provided this equipment at no charge. And it was a streamlined, better system than what we had before and actually reduced our chemical demands. We've reduced the lighting schedules to match what patrons are doing throughout the facility. So they just light the whole place up like a Christmas tree. What we'd like to do in the future, like the city manager suggested, is go to a more of a, a better pump system. And then the long-term dream would be solar for the facility. You know, if we're spending $14,000 roughly monthly on electricity, if we could have solar for that facility, it'd be a big impact. And then the dream, new out on the, out on the market right now is actually energy-creating equipment. Our equipment now will do some of that, but this would actually put energy back into the system. But future dream.
Live bulb is dimmed.
I have a bunch of hamsters.
Pack them in.
Image, brand and marketing. If you've been to Dutch Brothers, they do a fantastic job of making you feel welcome, trendy, sometimes almost too welcome. And what we'd like to do is update our staff shirts, our logos and the image of the facility, along with developing marketing campaigns that, that really go into what we've been doing as far as changes in new hours and fee structures, that includes everything. And really get ourselves out there and let people know what we're doing. Some of the ways we'd like to do that is free community days, non-member discount programs. So if you've never been to the facility, come out and try it on us and then we'll give you a discount for a membership. Pool and community events, we have a great aquatic facility in Arizona in the desert. We should get that thing used as much as we can. And then seasonal marketing pushes, New Year's resolutions, folks, Christmas holidays, people coming to the area. You know, pick up on those things and really push, put a campaign behind it.
Can I make a comment? I, you know, I, and maybe you don't want our opinion, but I, I get the, I get the concept of the new member discount program, but it bothers me. I, you know, every time I see a Dish Network commercial and, and you can get it for $19.95. I'm paying a hundred bucks here, people, you know? I don't think it's fair. I think we really need to, to look at that and think about that. Is it fair to the existing customers who have been with us? However, many years, you know, 10 years or, you know, that the rec center has been open and now, so, you know, if you're new, you, you're going to get it cheaper. So it's just something to think about because it is something, you know, I hear other people complain about it with other services, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, councilmember. And I can't believe you compared us to Dish Network.
I'm sorry.
Good point.
Mayor, Councilmember Alhouse, we actually agree. We're, we've still debating and trying to figure out the best marketing mechanism we want to get through tonight and then we'll kind of move forward. Our biggest thought is that free day to get people back in.
I like that.
The discounted rate, it, some of the rates you're going to see are already 30% discounts. So we'll kind of play that one by ear as we move forward. But I hear that complaint also. He's, we also have the problem with people who've been members, but it's been a couple of years and do they get a discount or they don't sign up for a few months, so they get a better discount if they're new members. So it does create a few issues that we're aware of and are going to work through.
Returning members. And I am sorry I compared us to Dish Network, but it's one of those things you see all the time. I mean, it's, they're constantly on TV. So Dish, Drag, whoever you want to, you know?
Like the city manager, these, these are ideas.
Right, and that's, I just wanted to express my opinion on one of the ideas.
This would come back to council, I'm assuming, any kind of a program, discount program?
If we did a discount program, it might. If we do a free day, it probably won't. It'll just be operational. We, we will, you'll see it, it'll be in a notice because we'll staff it up and we'll advertise it and we'll make it a big deal. We might even have Push the Mayor in the Pool Day.
Hey, love that.
I just, that just came up. I kind of like that. So yes, you will be notified.
I second that.
We're not voting on that, right?
Maybe the city needs to get our own dunk tank.
I think so. Head in that direction, I think.
So this slide is comparing staff fitness and planet fitness costs. And want to make sure that council's aware, it's not like we're going after and directly competing with these private industries in the, in the, in the community. We just want to be aware and, and we're not going to beat their pricing. What our plan is to do is be very competitive by providing a membership that includes everything. But it, we thought it'd be nice for the council to see this, so just so you're aware.
And we have one other company probably coming to town within a year. Another gym, which we welcome all businesses. Again, our goal is not to compete them at the price. I do think we have great pricing, depending on the category you fall into. We have picked another niche, full service, whether it be aerobics all day long from, I think, six o'clock to seven o'clock at night, maybe eight some nights and other items. But we wanted you to know that we've done the research to make sure that we're not off-base on what we're proposing. And I think it clearly shows that we're not overcharging.
Any questions on this slide? So this is, these are our rates that we're proposing. And basically, obviously, there's no in-town or out-of-town distinction. What we've seen from that is that automatically, when a, when a customer approaches the front desk, there's that hesitation of, are you in-town or out-of-town, or where, where's the line? And then we go through the address game of, or actually you're out-of-town. If you walk across the street, you're in-town. And by, and this also allows us to be very simplistic about what's on the website, what our front desk has. We've slightly lowered the family and adult couple rates. And again, that was going back to what our current membership demo looks like and then also what the community's median household income is. So any questions?
So one of our thoughts with this is, like you said, we've, we've gone to one rate, no in or out of the community. But we've created that adult as our base price. Your youth, seniors, military have that significant discount. I don't know that this is right. We might be back in a year saying we need to up it a little bit more. We are having that goal of 75%. But the biggest thing in this... But the biggest thing this does is create a flat rate that from now on, we could evenly present a ten percent increase. We, it's in a, it's in a format that's more understandable and we could better adjust it as we're going through, whether we see adult memberships increase because those numbers are probably the ones that reduced the most was your your adult, your family, that group we're going after. So it's really a starting point for us. I would be fibbing if I told you this would absolutely get us to seventy-five percent. I think that this is a start in addition to our staffing models. We continually look at the staffing models. Don't know that we're exactly right just yet, still working on that. Of course, the electricity and the heat and the other utilities, getting our pool hours right. I think that making sure that our pools are available for kids. I know that there's high demand for lap swimming for adults, but, you know, you go back to rec center and you want to make sure that kids are first, at least until you guys tell me otherwise. And so I think there are several adjustments that we could make. We continually look at the hours to make sure that the hours are right. I was very surprised when I got here at eight o'clock on Saturdays when I first got here and the line was out the, I mean, at the end of the parking lot, people waiting to get in. So we've made these adjustments. We're looking at the numbers, seeing if the attendance is going up in those spots. One of the things, and I may, you may have said, and I didn't hear, was this does not affect our, significantly affect our senior partnerships with the insurance companies. There's one program that is a percent-based. It might affect that a little bit up, we're hoping. But if they're in a program that's contracted with us, one of the, I don't remember which one is contracted with us, but that rate does not change. That's with the insurance program. So those that are getting it through, the seniors that are getting it through their insurance, no change to those to those numbers. But we would be happy to have any feedback on these numbers, thoughts. This is our first effort presenting. We've been working on this for months, looking at those numbers, looking at the use. And this is what we we are recommending at this point.
All right. Very good. Does council have any questions for Mr. Allen?
Just a statement. And thank you for catching your breath and picking up the ball on this. I know it's been a lot of work and I think this is moving in the right direction. You've already done a lot over there to help save us money and then I think this is good. I look forward to seeing how it works out over time.
Seventy-five percent cost recovery is a lofty goal, but I think it's very important to have those those goals and to test ourselves and see how we can, as an organization, meet that expectation. I'm just very happy that you're you're running with it as well. And very pleased to see, too, that we're, have eliminated the out-of-town rates versus in-town. I think it simplifies things for the community and I just think it's a fairer way to present a rate structure.
I like that a lot.
I think the staff will be very happy, too. I can't imagine, you know, trying to figure that out. And, you know, some situations, it's quite difficult to know. Like Doug's neighborhood, you could be next door to each other and one's in and one's out.
I've always had an issue with that. Just ask Richard.
That's true, though.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Thank you.
This represents a lot of work on on staff's part. So thank you for just taking a fresh look at this. I think it's going to help out a lot.
Thank you. Last slide is, obviously, rec center continues getting a lot of awards. Best exercise gym, best kids entertainment, not only here but regionally. So that's a testament to a great staff and good leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can wrap this up. I do want to thank Hez for his leadership, Jack, Robin, the work that she put into getting the numbers ready for us. Rudy is now stationed over at the rec center. I don't know that he's happy about it yet, but I appreciate him working over there. I just, I think the staff over there has understood our mission to improve customer service, improve customer cost recovery. And we have such a gem over there, a beautiful facility. Our maintenance crew works hard to maintain it. I know that that Hez and and the team have been on, our contractor who does the cleaning tonight's tell, to make sure that it gets to the standards because we have high expectations. We've removed a lot of the rules and signs, so it looks less governmental. We just have made changes over there. And I know it has not been easy for Hez and his whole team over there. And I just wanted to publicly in front of you guys, let them know that I'm very appreciative of that for the work that they're doing and giving it a chance.
Great. Excellent.
Good job.
Okay, council.
Can I make a motion?
It is time for a motion, yes, sir.
I move to adopt the revised Recreation Center membership rates as presented.
Second.
Okay, council member Hulse made the motion and Matthews seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I would move that we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay. And last but not least is annual performance evaluation of the city attorney in consideration of contract executive session pursuant to Arizona revised statutes. The council may vote to convene an executive session, review the performance of the city attorney, subject to the city attorney's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. The council may also receive legal advice from outside counsel and give outside counsel and/or staff direction pertaining to the consideration of a new contract with the city attorney. So what this means for everybody in the audience is that we will likely go into executive session and come out at some point in the future. It could be half an hour, it could be forty-five minutes, it could be two hours. We just don't know. You're welcome to stick around.
I'm pressing for midnight. I just really want to spend time with you guys.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of city staff, we won't be here when you come out.
And just so the public knows this, we will film the results of the evaluation as well. So if you're very curious, you can always log in and watch it online. So thank you. And Mr. Horton?
Logging, you mean?
Yes, that's right. You you were made aware of the review and all that, so would you like to compel us to have the meeting in open session?
No.
Okay.
I move to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Okay, vice mayor made the motion and Narin seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.